To order, roll call.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Ashley Jones is absent.
We could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved. We'd like to welcome our junior government students tonight. If any of you have any comments, just let us know later on and you can come up and take the mic. Do you think you will? No, okay. Welcome. Let's move on to the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, minutes from the August 2018 meeting.
That was all part of it. So you can go on to public comment.
Just go on to.
Public comment there.
Are there any public comments?
We had nobody sign up tonight.
Okay. Informational items. Public relations update.
Yep, if we'll give Michelle just a second to move from the back to the front, she's going to give your, her annual update regarding public relations.
There we go. I'm pleased to be here tonight to give an annual update on the public relations program. The purpose of the program is the same as it's been, which is to help promote the district and inform our different stakeholder groups. The last year has been very busy with two major initiatives, one being the development of a new strategic plan and the second, the Prop RP levy campaign. The strategic plan, the planning process began last fall. We had a committee that had representatives from lots of different stakeholder groups. And our new plan has three focus areas instead of the eight, which it previously had. Success writing students, high quality staff, financial responsibility. Instead of communication being a separate focus area, communications embedded in all of the areas of the plan and many of the action steps and strategies. Right now, district leadership are working on the SMART goals that will be aligned to the new plan. And so you'll see in the coming year those specific goals and some of them will be tied to my report next year. So Prop RP, that was a success. Sharing information about the operating levy issue, that included lots of community outreach, a citizens committee, lots of concentrated communication efforts. And as you know, the issue passed with the support of our community. Each spring, we do a survey of employees and of patrons. And the indicator that showed the greatest improvement from the previous year was regarding transparency of the district and financial actions. And we believe that this is largely due to all of the targeted communication related to the Prop RP campaign and the strategic planning effort. And this shows the last several years how that indicator rated on the survey. One of the survey questions that I report on every year is how people perceive the quality of communication coming from the district. We continue to make steady improvement in that area, as shown on this slide. And then the other question that I've reported on several years now is about the district's efforts to report plans and progress. And this also went up and it's actually at the level it's at now, it's going to be hard to bump it up because it's already rating above a four, but we still have the goal set at 4.2. And we also attribute this increase to all of that concentrated communication the past year during the campaign and during the strategic planning process.
Can I ask you a question? These that we attribute to the Prop RP, are we going to leave those the same question? So we see this next year, if we continue the last, or if we do the multi-part of the Prop RP?
Those to the two previous ones about quality of communication and the district's efforts to report its plans and progress, we included those on the survey before the, several years before the campaign and I anticipate that those would continue because those are pretty broad. But sometimes when something goes up or down significantly, you can tie it to timing. If there's a crisis right before the survey, sometimes crisis communication score is a little higher. The next slide shows a few other high scoring indicators that are related to communication. One is effective communication of emergency information. It went down slightly, but we've always scored fairly high in that area. Patrons like the fact that we can get the information out quickly and that has become more targeted. You may recall years ago when there would be a bus accident or an ambulance at a school, we would send out district-wide email or RPF date. And now, a lot of times if there's a bus incident, maybe a bus is delayed or mechanical failure, we can have the messaging, just go to the families of the students on that bus. And so you may not hear of every incident, but the families that need to hear have a more targeted message. Those two other indicators, one is involving the community in decision-making, which is kind of related to reporting our plans and progress. And then quality of information on the district website, which it took a slight dip. A few other results from the survey. I included these because although you work with the district administration to support student achievement, sometimes parents and patrons don't always see that. So I'm going to work hard, not just to show the student achievement, but the fact that that support makes it possible tying in that. Because I think when someone answers that question, they don't necessarily really realize maybe what the connection is. We haven't helped them connect the dots, so to speak. And then that last one is a newer question. It was new on this year's survey about community partnerships. And that's something that's a strategy in the new strategic plan. We've had community partners for years, but now we're starting to take a more formal approach in inventorying the partnerships we have, whether it's Sonic sponsoring things, up to internships at a business. And we're going to try to identify a needs list for other potential partnerships. Moving on to the website. During the month of August, there were more than 46,000 visits to the website and that list shows the most visited pages. The website analytics that we have will also show certain times of the year that pages are visited more frequently. So August naturally is a very high month for website usage. So I also looked at March, just as another month as an example, and that month there were 32,150 visits. The list of the most visited pages was the same, but Work for Ray Peck and Human Resources was the second most visited page instead of the fifth. And that makes a lot of sense too, because in the spring is when we're starting to do a lot of the hiring for the coming year. But the human resource pages are always very popular. So our YouTube channel, it's not one of our most often accessed communication sources, but I considered another tool in the toolbox as we try to put information out there in a variety of ways. You can see we have a few more subscribers. The watch time is down. The total number of views is down. The average view duration is down, but there are still people accessing the reports or watching the meetings. And then I have a list that shows the most watched videos. And the one that had the most views was that promo for Good Neighbor, Strong Community. It was an interview with Kim Bailey introducing the conference. And then the Prop RP recorded presentation actually had more time invested in watching it. Then you can see the various meetings. And as we learned from this month's work session, sometimes candidates use it as they're preparing to run for office. And Billy told us that he watched meetings to kind of get a feel for how the board meetings went and to learn about how the board interacts.
The time in view is down because I'm here now and I'm not at home watching.
There you go. Well, I figure you might have bumped up our average a little over the past year. The electronic newsletter is the one that comes out on Friday. It usually has a few articles with a photo or two. Every year to year and a half, I import the parent email addresses from the student information system. And so this includes sometimes multiple email addresses for the same family. It might have a work and home address for mom, work and home address for dad, maybe step parent. So when you can look at the bottom where the subscribers is 10, over 10,000, over the course of the next few, I just imported those again like two weeks ago. So over the next couple of weeks, that number's going to drop a little because some people don't want to receive it three times and they'll start to opt out. But it does stay pretty strong. Each time I add the addresses, you're always, it's always a net add, but it will go down a little bit from that 10,000. As that list grows, our open rate drops and there's a couple of reasons. One is because someone might receive it three different times and they don't open it the third time that they see it on another email. Some just really aren't interested. They're a, maybe the non-resident parent or step parent and they don't always click to open it. And then open rates are just decreasing across the industry and I think people are just overwhelmed. They get so many messages. Some weeks you open it and some maybe you don't. We can look at comparisons by industry through Constant Contact. That's the service or the provider that I use to do the newsletter. The open rate in education, K-12 education organizations, 24%. And you can see that ours is well above that. It has been since we've started. I think part of the reason for that is we don't just add subscribers to add them. When I'm adding those names from the parent information system, they're already vested in the district. They have students or family members that attend here and then other people in the community can opt in. So we're not just buying a list. These, the names we're adding already have some connection and so I think that helps the open rate stay strong. The bounce rate, those are addresses that either they're suspended, maybe they have an out of office or vacation message. It's a nonexistent email and they didn't bother to tell us that they don't have that email anymore. And so each week I go through that list and try to weed out some that might, might not be good email addresses anymore. And then the click-through rate, when there's links in the newsletter, I can tell how many people and what percentage click through to read an article. So if we click through to homecoming pictures or click through to the board vacancy information, you can kind of tell which things people are more likely to click on. And we don't always have a lot of things to click on in the newsletter and some weeks we do. So that percentage down there, you can see where it says 36.3%. The highest things that people will click on are the foundation grant awards, the calendar in February, January, when that's approved, very high click rate to see that. School supply lists and registration information. RP update, that now goes to a little over 6,000 or 6,300 email addresses. Text messaging is down a little from the previous year, 3,300. Phone numbers receive the text messages and that number will go up or down if there's, if we have bad weather and I've sent several texts in a row, then we'll get calls, "Am I toddler graduated last year? Please take me off your list." Or a bunch of people will sign up because they found out someone else learned of something through the text and they weren't subscribing. For social media, the district has Facebook and Twitter and this shows how many Facebook likes we have and Twitter followers, both of those have gone up. Facebook is mostly our women, our moms. That's the way that they hear about things. And then an attachment in your packet was the communication plan. And some of the things, I've listed here some of the things that it includes, designation of the official spokesperson, guidelines for working with the media. And then something that we provide to the principals kind of as an appendix or an addendum, our sample press releases. I keep lots of files of those, some templates that I can use to help them if there's an incident at a school, just have some things that are more common, have those prepared to help them.
I think we've talked about this in the past, since you're a one-man show. Do we, do we have a backup person if for some reason you couldn't get in and do these, that would step up and do these things if you weren't able to?
Well, sure. That would be our superintendent. He would do part of that. Pam has some login information. Like I have a list that shows like how you would get in to maybe administer some of the social media pages. The newsletter, actually Dr. Montes is an administrator on the Facebook page, although he, I don't think he's ever had to post anything since he's been here.
I'm more of a Twitter guy.
Yeah. So that is probably a challenge is there's not a lot of depth when you have a one-person department. The great thing about the way technology has evolved is that even if I am not right there in the office, a lot of things I can do a quick or a short post or something from anywhere that I might have some phone or computer service. So that, that's the good thing. If I was snowed in somewhere, I could still get the word out. But things like when school is canceled, we actually have a team of about five of us that each take a different part. Brian calls the TV stations. Dr. Montes does the recording that goes to the family homes. Pam updates the automated phone line. So there's several pieces. I don't know. Hope that answers your question. Any other?
The parent portal, Tyler's, that's its own monster, but do we track that and see how many people are visiting that or going to that and checking their kids' information and stuff?
That's a great question. I do not have responsibility for the student information system. And so I'm not sure what the analytics are. That would be through either academic services or the technology department. And we can try to find that out for you. How many parents are actively using it?
I know we have looked at that at times in the past to see how many parents are accessing grade information, but I'm not sure exactly.
Is it through your?
Most of the time I've looked at actually teacher reads. We have a K5 and now the 612. So I haven't looked in the Tyler system recently, so I'll ask Linda Ford to help me. She's kind of administers that and made the look at logins.
Yeah, I remember, we had talked about that at a work session or something, but it would be nice to get those statistics on an ongoing basis.
Well, one thing that's kind of related is we've talked about the need to publicize reminders on how to access it, help parents who might not know how to log in or remind them how to check it. So I would tie into that part of it, but I don't have the statistics on the, on the usage.
Someone who, I'm sorry. When you do the weekly update, I kind of skim through it and when it says board stuff, I know what's going on on the board, so I kind of just glance over that completely. Do we put a link on there to the YouTube video?
Oh, yes, actually, and I should have said that when I got to that slide. So most people don't go, don't think to themselves, "Oh, I'll go check YouTube to see what's up with Ray Peck's school board." I include in the RP update following the board meeting, I include a link to watch the meeting. And then on the website, I'll have a little recap of the meeting and then I'll have a longer recap that someone can read or they can click a link to watch it.
Watch the video.
And then.
Social media.
Social, yeah, Facebook and Twitter, it'll also say you can watch the meeting and there'll be a link. And most of the, let me go back, because I did have a note to my.
If you subscribe to the YouTube channel, then it notifies you anytime there's a new video uploaded.
If you become a subscriber, you can, you can be, which, there's 69 subscribers, so you could be that person. Let me look here. 36% of the viewers are clicking on it through Facebook. So they're seeing on Facebook and they're like, "Oh, I think I'll go take a look." And then after a minute, well, I'm done. Or two minutes. The website is like 35% and then the email is 25%. That kind of gives you an idea. So most of the people are going there when they see that link, they're being directed to it. They're not searching it out on their own.
One of the things that I know Michelle's focusing on this year, this is the first year in several that we haven't had that major planning initiative where we were facility planning or boundary changes or a bond issue or levy issue, what have you. So I think you could probably already have sensed the focus on trying to reinforce what we're working on related to the strategic plan. So any chance she gets the opportunity to tie something we're doing back to what we had planned in our planning process, she takes that opportunity, so.
And actually this week, there have been a couple that have just dovetailed really nicely. The science students at the high school planting the milkweed plants, that's a hands-on experience. I'm trying to think, the motivation panel that some high school English classes participated in and these outside visitors were talking about career paths, which is an area that we're emphasizing. And then they were also talking about the importance of soft skills because it ties into the senior drive. And so this, just this week, there have been several things that I've been able to feature that are also tying right into some of the things in the strategic plan.
One thing that came up this morning, there was a Ray Peck Foundation meeting that I attended this morning and we were talking about the You Matter.
Yes.
She's modeling the T-shirt initiative. And some of the comments or discussion that came up was that that group has helped raise awareness of things that the district offers through Ray Peck Cares or other foundation or district initiatives that people just weren't aware were even offered. And so I guess what I would put out there is, are there ways to further inform and communicate? You know, there are so many great services or things that are being offered to help support our families and students, getting that information out there. I was a little surprised here because we hear everything all the time. We know what we're doing.
Right. Yeah, and then you're surprised when someone says, "Well, I've never."
We had no idea and you have 2,000 people that had no idea, right?
That's.
And that's an over, I mean, not all of them had.
But it's like the clothing closet. That's something that.
So I think it would be great to find a way to include more of those on routine basis, even if it's short snippets as opposed to a long snippet, in getting that, that information out.
Sure.
Anything else? I'd like to thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to action items.
The board vacancy process we discussed in our work session last week, and based on that conversation, we identified a couple of upcoming calendar dates that we could use for working through that process. At this point, we have put it out there in a variety of channels that we have this board seat available and we've asked for people to submit letters of interest. And so the deadline for that is October 4th. And per our discussion last week, our first meeting would be on October 9th at 6:00 PM to review those letters and identify up to three per policy that we would want to bring back to interview. And then October 30th at 6:00 PM was the date we had discussed for conducting those final interviews for the board to meet with the whatever finalist candidates they choose to interview and then decide from there who would fill the seat to remainder of the term till April. So you're welcome to discuss any other parts of that process you'd like, but the action item here tonight would be to approve those two dates for special meetings.
Is there a motion?
I move to, I move to approve the meeting dates of October 9th at 6:00 PM for the review of candidates and October 30th at 6:00 PM for the finalist interviews.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay, motion passed. Moving on to committee reports.
Oh, we got one more. Education court. Dr. Volker's ready to go.
I was coming up.
If you just wear a brighter shirt.
I know, I apologize. I'm trying to blend in.
All right.
Oh, thank you, Michelle, for opening it up. Well, good evening. Towards the end of August, Dr. Montes, myself, some building principals, were invited to attend a meeting in Harrisonville to discuss a countywide truancy diversion program. So as you can see by the floor, this is the information we received in attendance at the meeting. Judge Lett and Judge Collins have developed a new program for Cass County and for Johnson County, Missouri schools called Education Court, and it is intended to be a diversion effort for the families of elementary, elementary-only students with chronic attendance problems. The circuit judges are wanting to hold informal proceedings with families on school sites to help address the underlying needs that are preventing younger people from attending school on a regular basis. So the effort would involve circuit judges, children's division, employees, juvenile officer, school officials, well, certainly the principal, the counselor, possibly a teacher, and a school resource officer as needed. They are requesting pilot schools for participation starting fairly soon. So in looking at our attendance data and looking at our elementary schools across our district, the school that we identified that might most appropriately fit this was actually Eagle Glen. So Eagle Glen had 13 students last year with attendance below 85%. So just to let you know, trying to quantify that, that's missing approximately 26 or more days of school. So that's fairly significant when you look at what you're trying to do in the learning process if you miss 26 days. We did, there were 34 students that were actually below the 90%, 17 days or so of school, but we're really looking at targeting those with chronic absenteeism. It's also, I think, really important to note in this is, we talk about participation for Ray Moore Peculier in a possible pilot, that we, and I explain to you, understand that this process still would be one that would be a Ray Moore Peculier process in identifying students that might be, and families that really might be appropriate for this. So let's say we had 13 students with attendance below 85%. I think it would be very important, as I was talking with Mrs. Jones, the principal, that she and I and the counselor sit down with those and go into great detail as to why those students, we have, of course, students that would have health concerns, students that have very legitimate reasons for those absences, absence rates. And we wouldn't want that to be, those families to be identified as needing additional support when we absolutely know why they have those rates of absenteeism. So I think that's really critical to know, even as the board looks at, considering becoming a part of a pilot, we want to make sure that everyone understands this is still a process for us to identify families that might enter this.
Can you refresh my memory on what is our process for student absences?
Absolutely. At the elementary level, we pretty much, we call it the 5-10-12 essentially. At five absences where we, it might be verified, but often it's not. They are not excused absences, so you bring back a doctor's note or for some reason there was a court situation or a death in the family, those are what listed as excused. But if you don't have those and a parent just calls in, or they don't call in, that's listed as a verified or unexcused absence. So at five, we send a communication home simply saying, "You're at five absences, attendance is important." When you get to 10, that's a little bit different. At 10, we send that letter home, but we also reach out and set a meeting. And at that meeting, we're problem solving. Where are we? And then at 12, obviously that didn't work, we get to. And then at twelve, obviously that didn't work, we get to twelve, then we will possibly, after consulting again, contacting the family again, make a referral to Cass County Juvenile. It is a situation where we're absolutely trying to partner with the families. I think the effort and intent of our circuit judges and those involved are to get more people to the table. What we find with chronic absenteeism is it's, it's kind of a holistic, it's, well, there are many different reasons why you're missing almost thirty days of school. There really are.
Are they wanting to use the same five, ten, twelve that we?
That, that would be up to us. That would be up to us. Often we know at ten, let's say you might have a refusal to meet. You might have a situation where there, this isn't a problem. We, we don't, you're not, there isn't a cooperation to try and improve the situation. That might be a great step for us in then saying, okay, we, we're going through our process. Our process isn't leading to any change. Then that's where we could look at this pilot program and, and possibly refer the family to that as well.
So instead of at twelve sending them to juvenile referral, we would potentially do this meeting instead?
Absolutely, in this case. In the, if we take this pilot. But I think it's also, yes, juvenile will be at the meeting. So the referral would be made. But juvenile would be there as well as children's division. That's the piece I, I really do think. So you're looking at, often the family needs complete services. And we're not just talking about the young person, but support across multiple areas. And juvenile and in coordination with children's division, in coordination with our municipal and our circuit judges can kind of bring that, all those supports to bear.
What if a parent said no?
I think that would be something, we would make the referral. I mean, we would be in our process anyways. We'd make the referral and I think that would be up to the juvenile justice system at that point in time. And we are not here to, we are not the juvenile justice system. We're here to educate. But it sure is nice when they're in school, so we're able to do that.
Oh, I understand. And this meeting would happen in our building?
Yeah, that is the pilot program.
I'm a little concerned about that because of developing a negative connotation. I would, don't want a student or a parent developing a negative connotation of when they walk into our building.
Yeah.
And this potentially is a, a negative situation.
Sometimes when we, we're having those meetings, there are quite a few more people at the table. So I think you have a very valid, I think that's something we have to watch.
And I don't want them to feel like they're ganged up on.
Right. I, I agree. But I think that's something we have to watch in the pilot program. When I was going back and looking through these numbers, often we're not talking about one-year absentee rate issues either. And I, I just pull rates and we're talking about twenty-five days this year in first grade and thirty-five in second grade and forty in third grade. So these are situations that we've tried to work on often for a number of years even in.
Is there any data to support showing that these things work, these truancy courts or whatever?
There have been, and I think Judge Lett and Judge Collins talked about successes in other counties in Missouri. This would be a first for our county and Johnson County, Missouri. So we'd have to track. I tell you, running things as a pilot, even in academic services, sometimes that is a, a great way to examine the data as you go along. And if it doesn't work and it's not improving attendance and it's leading to negative relationships, often we, if there are supports for families, that negative connotation might not be there. If they're actually finding that they're receiving supports and they're getting the help. But if they don't, and if it just feels like a situation where people are ganging up on them, then I don't think we'll find the success. Hopefully it won't be that way.
Well, I think some of it probably goes back to people not knowing what help is out there or how to get to that help. So this may be that other step. Because I just talked to a parent Friday night at the football game and they didn't know we had two licensed mental health professionals now. And I'm like, we really need to get that piece out there. We need to probably put that and blast it out in some of our communications. But I think this just goes to another, it kind of forced, not forces is not the right word, but kind of lets the parents know there's help out there for them. They don't have to do this alone. This is a community where school, we want your kid to get educated. So let's try to help that kid get through education and not, like you said, it's, it's a cycle of absences. It's not just a one-year, you had a health issues or whatever. We need to look at those repeat issues.
We do have a somewhat similar scenario with our youth court program that's been around a while to where it's a very different model, obviously, but it is an intervention. It's a diversion type program. And I think the feeling is that's been successful. And I, I think this would be worth a try. But my challenge to Dr. Volker has been, we want to make sure we're the gatekeeper of who gets referred and then assess how it's working if we're going to ever consider, you know, doing it long-term.
You look at, I don't think we necessarily have the issue, but some of these students that are transient anyway, I don't want to put parents in fear thinking we're just bringing in more governmental agencies to track them. And then they're just more transient, which makes it worse on the student. I'm a little wary of bringing those systems into our school building because of that connotation of you're bringing the policeman into my jail, or into my, this is more of a jail than it is a school now.
Yeah, it, it's definitely a balance. And I do understand the concern. It, it, from my vantage point as being basically the chief of academics, it is very difficult to ensure that our kids are getting a high level of education if they're just not here.
It could be the outreach and the, the help that they need, though.
We, and that's sometimes we're, we're scared to have those conversations and those are tough conversations to have. When you sit that many people in the room, that might be intimidating, but that might be what is needed to turn the corner. And if we're seeing year after year of, of those trends, the chances those kids graduate and attain the things that we all want them to attain, it's tough.
Oh, I'm all about helping.
Yeah, and we are too.
I just want to make sure we're not crossing a line.
We are too. And I, I wanted.
So when they're referred to the truancy, the juvenile office, what is the process there versus what we would be doing with this?
Well, after we refer to juvenile, essentially it's their process. They take over from there. That is, we aren't as involved in the process. One piece of this that might be a little more positive, we are actually at the table, still having those conversations. So I think that might be a way to look at it in a positive light as well.
So this is basically a last resort, that we've exhausted every avenue that we have.
We've exhausted many, yes, yes.
That's our, that's our thought about how we would handle it. Other school districts in the county may be having a different criteria how they refer. But our thought is they're to the point of where we'd be referring them to one agency or another.
Right, most likely.
For either truancy or educational neglect, one side or the other.
And we might, we might start a little bit sooner. If I'm looking back and we have three or four years of historical attendance data that we're trending the exact same line, it might be better to start, you know, at eight or at nine rather than wait the next month. And I know they're going to miss that many days anyway. So.
Well, and like you said, if we know there's a kid with a chronic health issue, that we know upfront that they're going to miss.
Oh, yeah, that would not be.
That's going to be one we're going to pull.
No, absolutely. I, in checking these, absolutely, absolutely.
So it'll be one of those case by case.
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a motion?
Or you can ask, if you can.
I, I move to approve the Education Court.
Let's say as a pilot, as a Eagle Glen.
Pilot program at Eagle Glen.
Yes.
Is there a second? All in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
We will track data on this and be back with you as, as we see it progress. And I want to qualify one other thing. We're going to then submit to the, the judges that we are in and the juvenile office that we are interested as a pilot. They are providing their resources among all the schools in the county. So it could be that we don't even get selected, but I just wanted to let you know that we'll submit to them and let them have their, their work now, so.
Well, I wasn't trying to belittle anything that we're trying to do. I just want to make sure.
Those are the same conversations we were having, so.
Okay, moving on to committee reports.
Well, I apologize. I should have put a section on our agenda tonight for MSBA Board Delegate. Next week, I will vote at conference on the delegate, on the delegate assembly forum. And Pam's going to email that to everybody tomorrow. There's about twelve amendments that we're wanting to make this year. Most of them relate to supporting taxes if they're going to education, different things. But one of the big key ones in there, because if it's not in the platform, MSBA cannot legislate, help legislate for it and advocacy for it, is advocating for the non-move of election dates. And I think that will be another big thing in legislation this next year of keeping it at the municipal level elections. So that's a really good one that's in those amendments so that we can actively legislate from their level on leaving the election date where it's at. So she's going to send that out. If anybody has any questions, please let me know. If you go online to sched, S-C-H-E-D dot com, you can look at next week's conference and look at all the classes and actually set up a calendar for you. S-C-H-E-D dot com. And you can email that to yourself or there's an app. So if you want to look at some of those classes before you go and read what they're about, you can do that on there. Let's see here. We got an update. I had a board, Board of Directors conference call today. So we got an update on the election of the state board members. Kim and I were able to go up and watch Kim Bailey be sworn in. So that was neat to see somebody from our area. And it really says a lot about our board and our area that someone was selected from here. Because there's only one board member from each congressional district. So Vicki Hartzler's congressional district four, there's only one board member allowed. So we're, we got a good thing there. They did reappoint Pete Hershen today, so he will be on there now. They have opened up the process for the new commissioner. That will close October nineteenth. The exhibit hall downstairs will only be on Friday. So if you want to go to the exhibit hall, and then on Saturday, they're going to have all the student showcases. And they have twenty-nine student showcases this year. You can go down and see what other districts are doing with their students. I think that's about it on that. It'll be, it'll be a good conference. It was sold out again in no time. So it should be a really good conference for everybody. And then I went to a, my first Team Ray Peck meeting, and that was really good. I think I'm going to enjoy being on that one this year. I've never sat on that committee. I think one of the main takeaways I took from it, because a lot was just beginning stuff, was making sure our employees know that they have access to the, what's it called? Yes, the employee assistance program, so that they can utilize those pieces of that at no cost. So just making sure our, our employees know that we're providing those services there for them.
Any other updates? We had a wellness meeting today and there were three hundred Fitbits that were purchased at a very huge discount through Blue Cross Blue Shield. And there's been a Fitbit challenge in each of the schools. And Rachel, Rachel Searls has handed out a hundred and seventy-six Fitbits and said that a lot of the teachers were really excited that they actually got to see the Fitbits. And there's also going to be another challenge coming up on the number of steps that they can do. We also had a all-staff workout on the football field. Mr. O'Neill, thank you for showing up. He was, he was one of our leaders. But we weren't very well attended, so we were trying to find a way to get more attendance. We will have another one on Saturday, the thirteenth, from eight to nine in the morning up at the football field. And then we'll also do one on Sunday evening, actually the fourteenth. It would be the thirteenth, it's the Saturday. The fourteenth will be Sunday at five P M. up at the football field. So we thought if we'd offer two of them and have them at different times, maybe we'd get more attendance.
Say, have Michelle put it on the communication.
All right.
Well, Team Ray Peck did talk about that and trying to figure out ways to help bring up the participation in that.
It would probably help if all the administration would show up. That's why we did it for Sunday night. Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on, superintendent comments.
Well, I had a chance to go to the state board meeting Tuesday as well, and it was an honor to see Kim Bailey be inducted to the board. And they had some pretty heavy business to talk about. Just a couple of things that I would mention to this group. We are, to the time of year where we typically get our MAP results, our state assessments from the spring. Well, the English Language Arts and the math tests were new last spring. And so they have to go through an extra process to figure out what's the division between advanced, proficient, basic and so forth. And through that process, there's been some concerns about how those cut points have been set. And so the state board directed their staff to revisit that process again, which means ultimately our assessment results are going to be later than they even would have been otherwise. So we're still not a hundred percent sure when we'll get them. And that also impacts the annual performance report that we get each year. That's gotten later every year. We used to know that in August and then it was September, then it was October. This year they were telling us December and this may push it back into the first of the year. So what that really means is that we don't have as much useful information. And it's a good thing we're doing the NWA EA assessments that help us with our day-to-day instruction, if you will. So that's good news. The other thing that is of note, I think, from that meeting that we'll be interested in moving forward is the state board requested full funding of the formula plus an extra forty million for the transportation formula. And so for a couple of years, the state funding formula, the basic formula for our student attendance-driven formula has been fully funded, which is a great thing. But transportation is running about two hundred million short of the intended budget amount. So S E. requested to do a phase in over five years to make that up. So what people don't realize is the state law allows for up to seventy-five percent of our transportation to be state-funded. And right now they're down to twenty percent or less. And so we're having to make that up out of our operating budget, which impacts other things that we can do for our students. So I bring all that up as just kind of a future-thinking thing when it comes to budget. And hopefully that recommendation will make it through the budgeting price, process at the state level. I also want to congratulate Sheriff Bryce and Danielle George for being distinguished alumni. At Homecoming last week, it was a great event and activity. I had to be out of a town for the funeral, so I missed most of the festivities. It was, it was a great event from what I understand, and it's always good when you beat Belton. So that's even better. An enrollment update for the district. We continue to hover right around six thousand two hundred and sixty students in K-12. Next Wednesday is our, kind of our official count date, so we'll get some final numbers shortly after that. And that does not account our pre-K kids. So we're over sixty-four hundred in total. So record enrollment again this year. All of our fall and activities, fall activities are going well across the district. It's great to go out and see all the kids perform and do their, do their thing, whether it's band, choir, athletics or otherwise. So I encourage the whole community to come out and support our students. They do a lot of great things and it's just fun to watch. Thank you.
Okay, Board of Education comments. Next week, our board will be attending the Missouri State School Board Association meeting down at Tantera. And we, as a board, have been represented very well. I look at some districts and they have maybe two or one board member attending. But we've pretty much had the whole group down there every time we've had a meeting. So thank you guys for taking time to attend. And, you know, they're very helpful. We get to see what other boards are doing across the state and learn from them. And hopefully they learn a little bit from us. So thank you guys for attending.
I think that Homecoming went really well. I was, it was neat to see the younger cheerleaders come cheer with our big girls. I know that was a big deal for them and watching them do and being able to follow along. So thanks to those who made that possible.
Calendar of events? Work session and then a regular board meeting in October. Anything else that we need to be aware of?
We added those two meetings tonight, so we'll put that in the calendar, October ninth and thirtieth. So we'll add that to the district calendar.
All right, meeting is adjourned. All in favor?